All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? We've got a pretty tight schedule and I want to make sure that we give enough time to this very important presentation. So, welcome to the Planning Commissioners, my fellow council members, and our task force who worked on putting this together. So without any further ado, why don't we go ahead and get started. Wyatt, if you have any opening comments, and then we'll turn it over to Wendy.
Well, I just want to say that we're very happy to be here at this point tonight. This is a culmination of two years' worth of work with staff and citizens working together, I think, in a very good collaboration with their consultants who've assisted us with their technical expertise all the way through the process. Just one thing I will say by way of introduction, I'll turn it over to Wendy to introduce her task force members. But springtime, you see so many people out on the streets, riding bikes, out walking, and I'm thinking how great it is that after, how much work and serious thought has gone into this product to make sure that our streets are safe and functional for everybody who wants to use them in all modes of transportation, and I think that's what this is all about. And so we've got a great plan. This is a presentation that Wendy's done a couple of times in draft, and working through, you know, giving it to staff members and sort of working through the way to present this, because it is a lot of information to present. But what we would recommend is that we allow Wendy to do that presentation and then have questions at the end, because I think a lot of the questions that one would have as we're going through the presentation get answered in the presentation, and then we can go through that efficiently, and then have a good discussion, questions, and talk about next steps. Wendy?
I'm going to turn the lights off. I don't want it to be too dark, but I'm starting to think. All right. I am so excited to be here tonight. Yeah? Yeah? Okay. Now I can be, I can be excited all over again. Okay. I am so excited to be here tonight. As Wyatt just said, this has been a tremendous effort, and this really is the culmination of two years of very hard work, and I will get up to introducing everybody, but in time. So, let me just start my presentation and let's get going. This is the City of Falls Church Farmers Market. When people come here on the weekends, they walk there, they bike there. If they don't, they should walk, or they should bike. Fame goes with our Memorial Day Festival. This is a real pride of the City of Falls Church, and again, people walk to the festival, they bike, and this is not unlike the Tinner Hill Blues Festival, the Thursday Night Movies on the Green, Farm Day, any of our community events. These are really the gems of the City of Falls Church, and we should walk there, we bike there, and if we don't, we park nearby and we walk or we bike. We live in a city that is two square miles. There is no reason why we should not be walking and biking to all of these wonderful events and have people coming to the city and walking and biking. This is an example of a really nice sidewalk. We like this sidewalk. Unfortunately, most of the sidewalks in the City of Falls Church look like this. There are poles, there are utility poles, there are guy wires, there are large cracks, changes in level, more cracks, weeds growing up between those cracks, more poles, more poles, and this might be my favorite one. This is actually a pretty nice sidewalk, but it ends in the middle of the block. There is no warning that that sidewalk is going to end. There's no curb cut, there's nowhere to turn around, you're stuck. It's almost worse than having no sidewalk at all. And this is also the case on a number of our streets in the city. We have no sidewalks. We also have a bicycle route that's difficult to see here, but what, the main point here is that it goes around the city, and that's all you really need to see, is that we have a big loop, and what we have for those are we have bike route signs, right there. And in a lot of cases, that's what, that's what signs, these, this route, they're missing, they're faded, they're crooked, and so this is, this is what we have on the ground today. So what's the problem? The City of Falls Church, right now, is not very conducive to walking and biking. Paths are not connected, paths are missing or in poor condition, paths are not necessarily safe. We have not built a new sidewalk in a new location where there was not one currently existing in over 30 years. Well, what's the solution? Solution is to conceive of a network, a network to connect all of the important places in our city, our schools, our parks, our transit routes, and create a master plan of improvements to create that network, and then to implement the plan. Now, the good news is that we've done two of those things. We've conceived of the network and we've put together a plan, and that is what you have in front of you tonight, this plan. Before I get started, I want to really emphasize, though, that what you have is this main plan, but there are a number of components to that plan, and those were all on the CD that you received. We have the Existing Conditions Report, and I'm going to hold it up, I just want you to see what they look like, okay? We have an Existing Conditions Report. We have the Self-Evaluation Update and the ADA Plan for Public Rights of Way, also in your, on your CD, and we have the Safe Roots to School Plan. A lot of this information is summarized in the main plan, but I want to point out that all of these other plans are standalone documents. What I'm going to do tonight is briefly run through the PED Plan, the main plan, and give you highlights of this plan. There are eight chapters, and I'm going to start with Chapter Two, The Planning Process. This, this chapter, which is on page three of your book, describes the process that went into putting this plan together. It was an extensive process. The project team was a staff team led by planning, close, close work with the Public Works Department with Bill Hicks, City Manager's Office Cindy Mester working on the ADA Plan, and Parks and Rec with Danny Schlitt. We are assisted by KLS Engineering, and we have Levison Budal and Aleep Garamella here tonight, representing KLS. And lastly, but not leastly, we have the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Calming Advisory Committee. This committee met nine times, and I don't think one of those meetings was shorter than three hours. This group has done a tremendous amount of work, and I would like to just recognize those members first. Dave Tartar, Annie Rhodes-Klein, Paul Baldino, Charlie O'Hara, Lynn Rothman, and Russ Wodisca. And I want to just take a moment and really thank you all for all of your very, very hard work, all of your time and energy to work on this project. It has been a long project, it has been an excellent project, and I appreciate your time. You're going to hear from the members of the committee after I finish my presentation, but wanted to introduce them. We've had a number of public meetings. When we started the project two years ago, we held upfront meetings to hear from the community, introduce the project, find out what was on the community's mind. We had walkthroughs, we had bike-throughs, we had a lot of people attend. I'd say we had about 80 people come to these meetings that were held on the weekends. About a year ago, halfway through the meeting, we had a public meeting in this room to talk about the methodology of the project. It was standing-room only, lot of interest in this project, really, really tremendous. We hosted an interactive web tool. This was up for about three months when the project started, and this was a place where people could come, log on, and note their areas of specific concern or interest. We received over 800 comments. That is significant, and that is through the tool and from email, phone calls. This has probably been the project that I have worked on that has the most amount of public interest. Moving on to Chapter Three, Goals and Strategies. This was one of the things that we worked on upfront. We said, what do we want to achieve? What are our goals in putting together this plan? What do we want to do? And this chapter, starting on page six, outlines those six goals. They are, one, implement a complete streets policy; two, increase walking in the city; three, increase bicycling in the city; four, increase transit usage in the city; five, manage vehicular traffic for pedestrian and bicyclist safety and comfort; and six, ensure that this plan meets, match the changing needs of the city. Now, all of these goals are very important, but the one I want to talk about, because it's really critical to understanding how this plan works, is to understand the complete streets policy. A complete streets policy says that when you build a street, you're going to consider the needs of all users. You're going to consider the needs of those people who are on foot, on bike, in a wheelchair, accessing transit, all users. And so that means when you're designing a street, you design it for all of those needs. You don't just build one thing, you build everything, you build a complete street. Chapter Four, this is the Existing Conditions Chapter, and this is really a summary of this larger document that I held up a few minutes ago. It is an extensive report. For the existing conditions, what we did, I'll pause to let a couple of people look at it. For the existing condition, what we did is we inventoried every single street in the city. This was a tremendous effort. This is the first time that we have ever done this kind of comprehensive assessment of what we have in the City of Falls Church. We used geographic information systems to then take all of that data and catalog it and understand how it looks spatially. We looked at every sidewalk, every curb ramp, every sign, to understand what is the existing conditions of the pedestrian network and the bicycle network in the City of Falls Church. This is just one map. What this map shows, it's a map of the city, and it's called Deficient Driveway Crossings, and you see a lot of red dots. Everywhere there's a dot is where we have a deficient driveway crossing. Now, this is one characteristic that we looked at. There are dozens that we looked at, and those are all in this, in this Existing Conditions Report, and some of them are summarized in the main plan. But the point of showing this to you is so that you understand how much data we collected, an enormous amount, and what you can do by layering this, this data is figure out what is the magnitude of the problem, how, what, how many problems exist at each particular So then we move into Chapter Five, Project Prioritization, and I want to pause here for a second just to say, so we've collected 800 comments from the public. We have thousands of data points that we've collected. Now, what do you do with this? What do we do with this? It's so much information, how do you make sense of this? And this is really where, this is really the backbone of the plan, to understanding the project prioritization, how we made sense of the data, how we were able to sort it and come up with an actual to-do list. And the key to the project prioritization is the buckets. I know we've seen the buckets before, but they're really important to understanding how this works. The buckets enabled us to sort like projects together. And so what the buckets are, the first one is new sidewalks. These are all the locations in the city where there is not a sidewalk today, so those would warrant a new sidewalk. The ADA Transition Plan Bucket. These are all of the locations in the city where there are existing sidewalks that are not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Bicycle Facilities. This bucket contains all of the locations in the city that warrant some type of bicycle facility. Traffic Calming on Collectors and Arterials. This bucket contains the 21 streets in the city that are collectors and arterials, and they're, and how they are evaluated for traffic calming. Spot Improvements. This bucket contains all of the other improvements. There are 15 categories of improvements, they're all the things that are not sidewalks or bike lanes or traffic calming. There are intersection improvements, there are signage, improvements to the W&amp;O D Trail Crossings, and I'll talk about all of this in more detail, but I want you to understand the five buckets, and they are discreet buckets. And then there is the Safe Roots to School Bucket. That bucket has select projects from mostly the new sidewalks and the spot improvements bucket. All the other buckets, again, they are individually unique buckets. This is, this is different, though, but it is important to have it as a separate bucket because we can apply for Safe Roots to School funding through VDOT, and we've actually already been successful in receiving our first award. When you take these buckets and you put them together, that is how you get your complete streets. So, we have all of our individual project buckets, and I'll get to how we put it all together later, but it's important to understand at least the buckets for right now. So, going back to that picture I showed initially of a street that does not have any sidewalks, that would be one of the projects that's in the new sidewalk buckets. This is a location where there are no sidewalks, so it's part of that bucket. So every bucket, as I mentioned, has many projects. This bucket, for instance, has 354 locations where there are no sidewalks, but the city has limited funding, and we can't do everything at one time, so you have to, we had to come up with a methodology of what do we do first? So we came up with a prioritization methodology, and I'm not going to go into great detail about this, but what I want to make a few important points about the methodology. The first thing we did is identify the routes that were important to the community, the routes to school, routes to the parks, routes to the metro stations, the transit routes themselves, and the routes to the commercial corridor. That includes the commercial corridor and a block off or so. And we said, let's rank these streets using this methodology. If the streets are along these routes, they're, they get more points than the streets that are not along these routes. And this methodology is similar for every bucket. It varies a little bit, but in general, it's very similar. And the most important point to mention is that this methodology is objective, it's transparent. You can take any street and put it through the methodology and see how it scores relative to the other projects in that same bucket. And every identified project is in the plan in ranked order. So let's move on to Project Summary, and this starts on page 53 in your plan. What this does is this summarizes the buckets. A couple of main points. There are over 1,000 projects in the plan. They range from small, a new sign, to large, major intersection improvements. So there is a wide range of projects that are listed in the plan. The plan has a 20-year implementation period, and the total cost to implement the plan in today's dollars is $21 million. Now, I know that seems like a large number, and I'll talk about the funding a little bit at the end, but I want to just say right now that it's achievable. We already have almost $6 million in funding to start work on this, on this plan, so the gap is about $16 million over 20 years. To summarize the new sidewalk bucket, again, locations where there aren't sidewalks. What's recommended are sidewalks on seven, new sidewalks on 76 streets. And the projects are broken into six phases, and the first phase has eight streets, and those streets are Southwest Street, Northwest Street, West Marshall Street, South Oak, North Oak, Great Falls, East Columbia, and South Roosevelt Street. This map, which is very difficult to see up here, is on page 55 in your plan, and this is an important map, and I hope that you take a look at it. What it shows, you can see in the legend here, what it shows are the projects broken out by the phases, and they're color-coded for each phase, so you can see those eight projects in Phase One, the five projects in Phase Two, and you can see how the phasing works out. The details are in a spreadsheet that were on your CD, but this is the summary map of where those new sidewalks are located. Moving on to the next bucket, which is the ADA Transition Plan Bucket. As I said, there are 441 locations that have some kind of deficiency, and these projects are broken into five priority areas, really four. The first priority area is any request that the city receives from qualified individuals with disabilities. Those are the projects that would be the highest priority. After that, they're then broken into Phases Two through Five, and they're ranked using the criteria that I mentioned before, and they, and the ranking, and they're grouped by street. This map just shows the Priority Two projects. In your plan, there are maps for Priority Two, Three, Four, and Five, and all of this is broken out into more detail in the ADA, in the standalone ADA Transition Plan. But what you can see here on this map is everywhere that you see a red line, those are the Priority Two projects for the ADA Transition Plan, and the Priority Three, Four, and Five maps look very similar, the red lines in different places. And what this does is it groups all of the projects for one street together so that you're addressing the street in whole and creating a complete route. In terms of bicycle facilities, this bucket is actually very different than the sidewalk buckets. In the case of the sidewalk buckets, those projects came about because they were from unidentified deficiency. There isn't a sidewalk, or there is a sidewalk that has a problem. In the case of bicycle facilities, the identified deficiency was that we don't have a very good bicycle network. So the first step was to identify what project should actually go in the bucket, and then we had to rank those projects. And so, working with the, with the Advisory Committee, we developed some criteria to use and said, well, where should these bike facilities be? They should be on routes that connect to the W&amp;O D Trail, they should be on collectors and arterials, they should connect to our city center, they should connect into the city and then out to the W&amp;O D Trail. And so we use these criteria to develop first just the list of streets that these bike facilities should be on. And then we looked at, well, what types of facilities do we want? And the committee agreed that we want to have bike lanes wherever possible, and what a bike lane is, is a dedicated space on the street for a bicycle, and you can see it in this photo what a bike lane looks like. There's also sharrows, and that is a marking on the street to indicate that it is a shared lane with bikes and cars. And then the third type of facility is signs, and that is what we currently have. And what is recommended in this plan is all three, all three types of facilities. And on page 65 in your book, you can see the new bicycle route, and what you see is that everything that is in blue is a recommended bicycle lane. And then what you see in red is everywhere where sharrows are recommended, and what is in green are where, are where signage is recommended. For bicycle lanes, those are the streets I want to focus on, there's eight of them. Southwest Street, Northwest Street, Lincoln Avenue, South Washington Street, Little Falls Street, North Maple Avenue, South Maple Avenue, and Hillwood Avenue. And again, these streets were chosen because they meet the criteria that, that we established for where these bicycle facilities should be located. Moving on to the next bucket, this is traffic calming. What we did is we looked at all 21 arterials and collectors in the city, and we looked at traffic, at speed, accident, presence of hazardous conditions, and then whether or not those streets are also on those routes that create our network to schools, parks, transit. And we ranked those streets using criteria that we developed, and those criteria are very similar to the criteria that, that we use now for, to evaluate residential streets for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and we presented those to you a few months back. And then they're ranked, and so the highest-ranked projects in terms of the greatest need for traffic calming, again, and arterials and collectors, are Southwest Street, Great Falls, South Oak, Marshall, North Roosevelt, and Northwest Street. And what the plan does is it looks at concept plans for what traffic calming would look like on these top-ranked streets, and I'll take Southwest Street as, as an example. And what was really interesting is that when you actually go and dig into the other buckets for the, for the recommendations for those streets, you realize that you can narrow the roadway and calm traffic by putting on the new sidewalk and the bike lanes that are recommended for Southwest Street. Other improvements that are recommended for Southwest include improvements of the side streets. Right here, you can see the recommendation for crosswalks with median islands here and separator islands on the side streets, new crosswalks. What you're doing is saying, there are pedestrians on the street, there are bicycles on the street, you're making these intersections more visible. In terms of spot improvements, as I mentioned, there's 15 categories of project, and these projects vary widely. Unlike the other buckets where we had all like projects, the categories of projects here are not necessarily alike. They range, again, from signage, pedestrian crossings, pedestrian countdown signals, improvements to paper streets to complete off-street trails, and intersection geometric changes. And one that I want to point out is the improvements to the W&amp;O D Trail Crossings. What this map shows you are two of the trail crossings, Grove Avenue and West Street, and then this is Northwest Street, and this comes down to Broad Street, and then this is where Park Avenue hits Northwest. Now, what's recommended, I'll focus on Grove Avenue because this is the typical, and this is what's recommended for all of the intersection and crossings, is that we raise the intersection for 50 feet on either side of the center line of the trail, so that you would have a raised intersection for 100 feet from here to here, is 100 feet across. It'd be a different pavement color, a different pavement texture. The purpose of this is to really make the W&amp;O D crossings highly visible to people on the trail, people on the street, to alert everyone that there is an increased pedestrian and bicyclist presence on these, on these locations. What's also recommended for Northwest in particular is the realignment of the W&amp;O D Trail. It currently goes like this, and it hits Northwest Street at a skewed angle. Visibility is very difficult at this intersection, so the recommendation is to realign the trail, and this can all fit within the existing right-of-way that we have for the trail. And what this would do is create a perpendicular 90-degree angle to increase visibility for all users. Safe Roots to School, this is the last bucket, and again, this bucket takes buckets from the Spot Improvements Bucket and the New Sidewalk Bucket, puts them all together for purposes of a Safe Roots to School application to VDOT. And what these are specifically are improvements to, to streets along the Safe Roots to School Chapter Seven, this starts on page 86, and this is where we put it all together. And before we put it all together, we have to say, well, what do we want it to look like when we put it all together? So we paused with our committee, and we took a tour around the city, and we looked at examples, and we said, what do we want all of these facilities that we've been talking about to look like? And this is an important component because it really dictates how your streets will look. And what we determined is that on Broad and Washington, sidewalks should be 10 feet. On all other streets, they should be five feet with a landscape buffer of five feet. That gets very close to this example. This is a four-foot sidewalk with a five-foot landscape buffer, so this is almost what's recommended. We don't have anywhere in the city, actually, that is a five-foot sidewalk and a five-foot landscape buffer. And where there are bicycle lanes, they should be five feet, where there's on-street parking, there should be eight feet, and travel lanes should be 11 feet. So we move on to this flow chart, and I realize that this is a busy chart, but I want to take a few minutes to walk through this because this is the plan. This is how you take the buckets and you cross-reference them, and this is how you put projects on the ground. And this is really the legacy of the PED Plan. It's not the list of projects, it's the framework to consider the projects and the methodology for making the hard decisions. And so let's start at the top. The city identifies a need or opportunity for a project, and that could be the developer comes along and is going to build a sidewalk associated with a project, or it could be that we're just going to start in one of the buckets and build a project, and we're going to start in the new sidewalk bucket, and we're going to pick project number one. The next thing you do, the second step, is you comply the complete streets policy, and this gets back to what I was talking about. We're never going to just build that new sidewalk, we're going to go look and see what else is required for that street where we want to build that new sidewalk, and if there's a bike lane, or a sharrow, or spot improvements, intersection improvements that are also required, we're going to think about the entire street at one time, so you're cross-referencing all of those buckets. And then you're going to use your design guidelines and say, well, what do we need? What would this look like, based on all of the needs and what our design guidelines say it should look like? And then you get to this yellow diamond. Can the desired design be accommodated within the existing active right-of-way? The existing active right-of-way, what that means, that is the curb-to-curb width of our streets. And this is an important point to mention, that we're not talking about the right-of-way that the city owns necessarily, we're talking about the right-of-way that is, that is active, that is currently being used, and this is an important assumption that we use, because in a lot of cases, although the city may own right-of-way outside of the curb lines, people have put retaining walls and fences and bushes in that right-of-way. And so where possible, we want to build our improvements within the active curb-to-curb right-of-way. And if the answer is yes, that it can be accommodated, that's wonderful, and you designed your project and you, and you essentially, you built it. If the answer is no, then we may need to consider alternatives, and these are all options, and it really is a case-by-case decision. You have to look at the, the project that you're building and see what is the best way to move forward. Is it to expand the right-of-way, to include that unused city portion? Is it to acquire right-of-way? Is it to remove parking on one or both sides? Is it to vary those design standards? Instead of having a five-foot buffer, do you have a three-foot buffer? This is the flexibility of the plan, and this is the framework that we use to evaluate the projects and make decisions on how to implement them. And then you choose an option, or you, you recommend a way forward, and you engage the public, and that is a key component of this as well, is to engage the public when you have any kind of complete streets project. And then you finalize your design with the input of the public, and then you determine your project budget and so on, and go forward to build your project. I'm using Northwest Street as an example of how you use that flow chart and put a project on the ground, and I want to emphasize that this is example, because I, that this is an example, because the takeaway from the plan, as I mentioned, but I really want to come in on this, is that what this plan is, again, is a decision-making framework. It is setting forward the methodology, the policies, the guidelines, and then you put that, and then you apply that to your real-world examples. And so this is one example on Northwest Street. The road width, the existing active right-of-way, is 37 feet. The projects that are recommended for Northwest Street are bicycle lanes, a new sidewalk on the north side of the street, spot improvements at various intersections, and to repair this existing sidewalk for ADA compliance. One recommended solution for this, to accommodate these, these needs, is to construct your new five-foot sidewalk right here, to put in your two bicycle lanes on the left and right side, and maintain your 11-foot travel lanes that can be accommodated within your 37 feet. I want to wrap up here, I'm going to be passing it off to other people to mention things, but again, I really want to reiterate some main points. What this plan has done, it has set up objective criteria to identify priorities, it has established a methodology using policies and guiding principles, it has provided a framework for decision-making, and lastly, but certainly not leastly, it has been responsive to the public comment. Also on your CD, what you have is, if I can find it, is Appendix D, your public comments and responses. I mentioned at the outset that we received 800 public comments. This document lists every single comment that we received and a response to that comment. And what is really interesting is that when you go through these comments, we went through them at the beginning to obviously have the input, and then when we went through them again to see, how, how did we do and how can we respond? This plan is extremely responsive to what the public was looking for. People were looking for bike lanes, people were looking for new sidewalks, and people were looking for a decision-making framework, people wanted us to move forward, and that is what this plan allows us to do. And it also is not a pie in the sky. And it also is not a pie-in-the-sky plan. We worked very closely with Public Works, because we didn't just say, we're going to build whatever we want. We have to be able to be realistic and do something that is reasonable. And so it's really important to work with Bill, and I actually want to pass it over to Bill to say a few words, because this plan actually then moves into implementation, and Public Works takes the lead on that. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Bill. After Bill says a few words, I'd like for the PED Bike Advisory Committee members to each take a moment to have some remarks, and then I'm going to conclude to talk about the funding. But at this point, I'd like to pass it over to Bill.
I'm Bill Hicks with Public Works. I arrived here tonight on foot. I walked from my house down here, and I crossed 2 different jurisdictions before I got to the city, Fairfax County and Arlington County. And as I was walking, there were several times where I was walking in the street between the parked cars and the travel lanes, very uncomfortable, both in Fairfax County and Arlington County. The plan before you tonight prepares us to be better than all of that, prepares us to be great. It's a great vision. My walk down here was 2 miles long. If you can walk 2 miles from my house here, you can walk anywhere in the city if we carry out the vision that's in this plan. We have worked with Wendy, under Wendy's leadership, she's shown great leadership. This body has shown great leadership as we have moved forward. Public Works has been here all along, and we are prepared to move forward in partnership with you, council, and with Falls Church community to see this plan carried forward.
At this point, I'd like to pass it over to the PED Bike Advisory Committee, and I'd like to start with Annie Rhodes-Cline to say a few remarks, and then I really would like each member to keep their remarks brief, but I would really like you to hear from all of them. We have spent hours together going through every detail of this plan. And so I think it's really important that you hear from the committee members and hear their perspective on the project.
Hi, I'm Annie Rhodes-Cline. I've been in Falls Church City for a little bit more than 3 years, and I have 2 little boys. And I walk a lot, I've pushed my stroller, that they are almost, well, pretty much too big for, all over the city, to the community center preschool, the library, the parks. I'm also a cyclist and a cycle commuter. So it was important to me to be on this committee. I think it's a set of very important issues. We did spend a lot of time talking about a lot of issues, and besides just saying hello, I wanted to say it was a very, very collaborative group. I mean, we come from a really wide array of perspectives, but I thought people worked extremely well together. So we didn't spend 3 hours fighting, I think, ever. We really, like, spent a lot of time talking in all very, very positive format. Thanks. Whoever's next.
My name is David Tarter. I'm the EDA, or Economic Development Authority's rep, to this committee. I was interested in the committee because I'm an avid walker and biker, but more importantly, I think the city's missed a great opportunity to create a connected, healthy, and vibrant community. As you heard, the city's only 2.2 square miles, one of the smallest jurisdictions in Virginia, yet we don't have a good sidewalk and bike network. I've walked my kids to school the past 6 years. Every day, I walk on public streets because the sidewalk ends, and this is about 300 yards from TJ. I'm walking down Lee Street in the street, and worrying about people on cell phones and drinking coffee, and whether my 2 kids are going to be, you know, sideswiped by a car. I've also seen people in wheelchairs walk down East Columbia because there's telephone poles in the little sidewalk. I've seen the trolleys full of kids being pushed in the street. Their parents would be aghast if they knew that their kids were in the side of the street because the sidewalk is too narrow with telephone poles in it. It's just something that I think we can do better. We've got the W-NO-D trail running down our city, but we don't even have a single bike lane. So I guess I would just end by urging you to adopt this plan and actually implement it. It's about time, I think, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Paul Boldu. You know, I'm a 33-year resident of the city. I've lived in both the East and West Falls Church. I'm also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. I enthusiastically recommend your adoption of the plan. It would make walking and biking a safe and pleasant alternative to automobile travel in the city. And right now, as many of you know, as all of you know, it's not, not everywhere. I also believe, quite frankly, it's essential if Falls Church is to be a viable community as we increase the amount and density of commercial and residential development. So thank you very much. It's been a great experience.
Thank you, Lynn. My name's Charlie O'Hara. I'm the Chair of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks, and was a mid-season replacement for this committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve. I've served on several task forces in the city in my 23 years, or 21 years, on the advisory board, and the work done by this committee was incredible. The document before you is absolutely beautiful, and I hope you'll take the time to read it and to look and see the detail that went into this project. About 4 years ago, somebody in my family decided it would be a good idea to get a dog. The children were about to leave, so some replacement was needed. I live in probably the least walkable part of this city. I live up by Proud Hill Water Tank on the very edge of the city, at the top of the hill. The only way to, there's only 2 ways to get out, and one is to go into Fairfax County and to walk down Woodley, no sidewalks in Fairfax County, or to walk down Lee Highway, which generally means walking in Lee Highway, because that part of the sidewalk there, the overgrowth, puts you into the street. I walk twice a day with the dog, and it's amazing how many members of this committee I see during my walks. I see David walking his kids to school, I've seen Annie with her kids at the bus stop, I've seen Patrick riding his bike. The members of this committee are dedicated walkers and bikers. I walk in the street about half the time because there's no sidewalk, or there's blocked sidewalk, or another dog owner and I are doing the doggy two-step. One of you leaves the sidewalk, so the other can pass. The 5-foot recommendations would be great in allowing 2 people with dogs to stay on the sidewalks and not having to call the game warden to pull the 2 dogs apart. The effort that goes into this project is to implement this, both from the design and the implementation, is going to take a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of funding, which Wendy will talk about, but it will be well worth the time and the effort. You know, like I said, I like to walk around here, but it is hard to walk around here. We should be walking to the farmer's market, we should be walking to the concerts in the park, we should be reducing the parking around this area, and this project will allow us to do that. Thank you.
As the Planning Commission liaison, this was a real honor to work with everybody. The hard work that was put in here has been mentioned, is illustrated through these people's comments, and is on display in this document. The thought and the consideration that went into this is tremendous, and it's also very, very well thought out. What it does is it provides a need that we've seen both through those comments and through the analysis, that Falls Church is not the walkable community and the cycling community that it needs to be. As an avid runner and cyclist, I've seen it for myself, as pushing my kids around on strollers, the sidewalks are woefully inadequate. You need one of those, you know, off-road strollers just to move through the city. And similar to what Dave said, we can do better than that. We should be doing better than that. What I like about it is the framework. I like that it's objective. I like that you can take an idea or a problem that comes before and say, this is how we can address it, this is where it fits in the order. I think it is a very fair methodology. That's some of the things that this group spent a lot of time with, is coming up with numerical values, prioritizing things, assessing where it was to where our economic development was. And that's another area where this can be very helpful as we try to increase density and look at some of our area plans. We need the connections. You cannot get from park to park without going through unsafe streets, without having any connectivity. I know other people here are cyclists. If you've ever tried to follow that bike route, it's impossible, impossible. So that this is well thought out, laid out, and it's not just, okay, this would be a good street. This is because we need to connect various things, get people to the city center, the city hall, because we need to get them to the farmer's market, to areas that we should be able to get to as citizens. And I would also strongly urge the adoption of this plan. It is a well-thought-out document and the result of hard work by both the citizens and certainly the staff. Thank you.
I also just want to mention that who is not here tonight from the committee, that you did not get a chance to meet, was Patrick Frye. And you all know Officer Steve Rao, he was our liaison from the Safe Routes to School Advisory Committee, and Walt Warfel, that they were 3 other members of our committee. I want to talk about the next steps. What is before you tonight is the draft plans, and next week's council meeting would be sort of the first reading and referral out to boards and commissions, and that would commence the 45-day review period for the entire project. There's a public meeting scheduled for the middle of that 45-day review period on Thursday, April 19, in the community center. And I'll be giving a presentation very similar to the one that you just heard, to explain the entire project to the public, hear their response. These plans will be available on the website for review and comment. And then the plan is to come back to you in a work session the end of May to present what I heard from the public, what the response has been, and what the response has been from the boards and commissions, with the goal of adoption on May 29. Last thing I want to focus on is the funding. And now, I realize you can't see this, but that's okay, because I really only want to focus on 2 numbers. And so if you have the spreadsheet in front of you, you can look at those 2 numbers. It's important, though, that I put this whole spreadsheet together so that you understand where the numbers come from. And we can talk about it if you want to, but I was really going to just go to the main point here. The number that you have in the top right-hand corner of your spreadsheet that is circled, total project cost, is almost $22 million. We got that from adding up the costs of all of the other buckets. The funding that we have in hand right now, and that's the other number that's circled at the bottom, is $5.7 million. That is 26% of the project cost. That is significant. That is a lot of projects.
That's money in hand.
That is money in hand. And the sources of that money is broken out on the spreadsheet. I wasn't going to go through it all, but it's BDOT 6-year improvement money that we reprogrammed from city center, and it's a host of transportation grants, Regional Surface Transportation Program, ARA funds. Safe Routes to School, we were just awarded almost $500,000. That is the first, you know, real gain from the plan. It wasn't even adopted yet. Highway Safety Improvement Program, revenue sharing. So there are a number of sources of money that we're leveraging to already, to implement this plan. So we have a $22 million total cost. We have 26% funded. The remaining need is about $16 million over 20 years. And what that is, is about $800,000 per year. And right off the top, if you take off our RSTP money, which we receive every year, we receive about $300,000, if you take that off the top, we're already planning to program that money towards PED Bike improvements. So what that leaves is a $500,000 per year unmet local need. It's doable. And what this spreadsheet shows are a couple of recommended sources of that funding. One is the commercial transportation tax, another is local funds. There's obviously the opportunities for other transportation grants that could offset this, but without that alone, it's $500,000 per year. That concludes the presentation, and we're all available for questions and comments. And really, I'd like your questions and comments to be directed towards anyone on the committee, staff, we're all here, we've all worked on this very hard, and we'd be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Thank you, Wendy, and thanks to the committee as well for putting this very detailed plan through. So I'm sure that we're going to have a lot of comments and questions as we go through. So why don't we start with the Planning Commissioners? Wendy or Melissa or Russ?
Well, I think from every presentation I've seen leading up to this, there's been several, I've been impressed with this. I love your buckets. And I have to say, watching your project through the presentation, it seemed a lot similar to the way we handled watershed, with that same kind of getting all the details in a city, figuring out what the criteria are, and being able to rank projects, that ability to really figure out what needs to come out on top first, what's going to give us the most value. You really see that in this report. And I just wanted to thank the staff, all the planning staff, Wendy especially, Cindy too. A lot of this money came from them reprogramming grants and bringing them back around to something that we could really use them for, which is just, it's impressive. This is grant money we could have lost, and they worked really hard to bring it back around and put it to another project. And the fact that, you know, we're able to cover 26% of the cost of that project is just from the staff being tenacious about holding onto that grant money, which I thought was just really impressive and really great. And it's a great project, a great, you know, plan. It has, I think it pretty much covers all of our needs. And, you know, the big thing, I think we all think of it, is that let's just hope that we continue to work through all of these projects and finish it. And 20 years is a long time, so it's good to see that we're getting so much at the beginning.
This adds a lot of work to do also through the Planning Commission, to make sure that any future plans or any area plans or anything, setbacks are going to be extremely important with this, and the roadways and the streets and everything. So this has got a lot to deal with, our future planning, that we have to be very aware of, so that we include all of this, and this will probably be, is an addendum to the comprehensive plan also.
I mean, I already said what I want to say, but with my Planning Commission hat on, I think this also can help with economic development and bringing in developers, because when you have a way to illustrate how people can move effectively through the community and to the retail locations, this could be very beneficial.
Thank you. You all did a fantastic job. This is, in my 12 years of being here, probably the most thorough report down to the granularity that I've ever received, so I want to thank you. And I think there are fantastic aspects to this report. I also see that there will be community pushback on a number of these things, so specifically closing major parking thoroughfares for bike lanes. So I know that we need to expect that, and that will come out, I'm sure, within the 45-day listening mode, and also the one-way street designations also, I think, will be hot buttons. So with all that in mind, of course, I'd love to see this go forward, at least to get comments and all, and also recognize that although all of these ideas are great, probably not all of them will be adopted. But I'd like to see us do as many as possible, and definitely anything that would bring us into ADA compliance, and anything that, as we go through what the priorities are, you know, addressing those number-one priorities that are for the best benefit of the community. So I look forward to seeing much of this implemented.
Thank you, Robyn. Johanna?
Nothing.
You know that John Lawrence just joined us, so John, if you've got any...
I just want to apologize for being late. I planned on being here, and obviously, things didn't quite work out. So I don't want to take anybody's time with questions that have probably been asked, I just want to say that one of the great things about this is it shows it, this is something we can do, I think largely because we're small enough. I mean, you couldn't get even a jurisdiction twice our size to probably do this sort of granularity like... of granularity, like Robyn said, where, you know, you could actually look at every intersection and pretty much every inch of sidewalk, and, you know, it's one of the, you know, sort of magical luxuries of being Falls Church and not a bigger jurisdiction, that we can actually do this, and others just could not.
Thanks, John. And Rob Meeks, also one of our other planning commissioners, is your okay?
I'm happy.
Okay, great. Ready to go. All right. Dave?
Sure. I want to thank everybody involved, especially the group and Wendy, for a very impressive job. And I've enjoyed, over the last few years, working in regional transportation agencies to assemble some of the money that we now have to go forward for this. So I really like it, I like the notions. I think it's, when you, though, begin to look at how these different priorities fit together and what they result in, going to granularity, there are some issues that I have. There seems to be a preference for adding an additional sidewalk, even where a sidewalk already exists across the street, rather than clearing that existing sidewalk of barriers. You can see that on Little Falls Street, you can see it on Lincoln Avenue, you can see it on Hillwood, you can see it on North Maple Avenue. I guess the point I'm making is that the priorities, when you put it all together, end up with things that appear to be illogical in their ultimate working through. The second point is, a couple places you make streets one way that are two ways, anyone in traffic will tell you that'll increase speeds. You also run the risk in some of these projects of needing to take privately-owned property, perhaps beyond the city's right-of-way, and to make a sidewalk. And that would have a tendency to greatly expand the cost and to delay some of these projects. So what I would like to see is a prioritization based upon where the foot traffic is, where the bicycle traffic is now, where we don't have a workable sidewalk at all, where we have one sidewalk, but where that one sidewalk is obstructed, rather than going through the cost of building a sidewalk on the other side of the street, perhaps out of right-of-way, and leading to some potential issues. So those are some of the questions I have. It isn't the process, it isn't the hard work, it isn't the general sort of, should we do this? Do we want to do it? Absolutely. But I do find that the prioritization process ended up with some peculiar results, where problems that aren't problems get a lot of attention, and where there are problems, where there are literally no sidewalks, where the one sidewalk is obstructed. Those projects tend to be prioritized the same or lower than adding an additional sidewalk when there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street that already works. And again, I'm looking basically, because I haven't had this for so long, but initially, I see that on Little Falls, I see it on North Maple, I see it on Hillwood, and I see it a number of other places. So that's a kind of granularity as we go forward. I want the end result of the priorities that we fund to really reflect ADA compliance, to really reflect where we have volumes of people and bicyclists, so we at least take care of where the demand is the greatest at this point, and where the safety issues are the most significant. Again, what I see as emerging too often here is building a new sidewalk on a street that already has a sidewalk on the other side, rather than looking at places that don't even meet those minimal requirements. So those are a couple initial reactions I had, and I look forward to continuing to work through this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell the group, great work. It's a long time coming, being the liaison to the Parks and Recs Board. This is at least my second time of seeing this presentation, and it gets, I think, better and better each time of the work that you've put in, identifying problem areas, prioritizing those areas, and coming up with a solution of how to manage and move this project forward. There are definitely some areas in here that, as Robyn stated, are going to be controversial. And, but I think as we work through this, as the 45-day comment period starts, we'll be able to get a little bit more neighborhood feedback as this plan is now completed, and they can actually take time to look at this, ask their questions, and have the opportunity for staff to address those questions and concerns. And when this comes back to council, I think it'll be an even better product for us to look at and make sure that we are able to implement it, and look for grants and other opportunities to come up with the additional funding. We have a significant amount of funding that's here right now, but I think we, as we solidify this plan a little bit more, we'll have more opportunities to go look for grants and funding for this project. It's going to give our students who are working in schools a much, much safer route to get there, and give folks who bike in the city and walk, run in the city, a much safer way to be able to get to those places in the city. WOD Trail, getting back and forth to our parks, give them a much safer route and opportunities to get there. I think this is a great start of a two-year project, and I think once we get these additional comments, we'll be in even a much stronger place to look at ways to implement as many parts of this as we can. Thank you for your work.
Thanks, Lawrence. I just wanted to also echo the tremendous amount of good work that staff has done, and also the pedestrian group has done to kind of bring this to fruition. I think this has been a long time in coming, but I think having this type of framework is really, really important. One, I think it provides us a holistic way of looking at the situation, what we want our city to look like from a pedestrian-bicycle-in-traffic perspective. But I also think it really does show that we're serious about being responsible stewards for public money. It's oftentimes, I think, there's grant money that's awarded without a lot of thought being given to how it fits with other needs in the city. So I think this really, and I think Wendy hit it on the head when she said this, really provides the framework for utilizing that money. So while I'm anxious to get this going and moving forward, I'm really glad that there is a plan that our citizens have worked on, that we've had consultant help on, and staff helped on, as far as how to distribute that money, you know, in a way that's strategic, sound, and has been well thought through. So, you know, I'm interested in getting public comment on this as we move forward, but I think this is a good step forward for us. I do have one technical comment. As some of you may know, I'm an avid cyclist, and as I think others have mentioned, the sort of how our bike paths work in the city is not great. But I was also interested in finding out how some of the pedestrian and bike plan fits into other localities and jurisdictions. I know other localities, for example, have dedicated money and put in dedicated bike lanes or the sharrows. And I'd like to see us take advantage of those, so we can draw folks in from the surrounding jurisdictions into the city. And there may be a way of linking this with commercial activity, like businesses and signage, et cetera. So I don't know if that really fits within this plan, but if we can think about utilizing those issues for commercial development, working with the chamber and our developers, I think that would be helpful as well. So that's all I have. And we want to talk a little bit about next steps on council. Just want to get the sense of council, whether folks are comfortable getting this on to the agenda for next week.
What we recommend is that it be placed on the council agenda for referral out to boards and commissions for the 45-day period. And part of that is, that 45-day comment period is also associated with ADA requirements, so that, or accomplish that federal requirement as well. But I think it would also be useful to sit down and speak with council members, either on smaller groups or on individual basis, about some of the questions or comments that you all might have, and want to offer that, and we can do that offline as well. So those are, I think, those are some next steps. And of course, we have the town hall meeting that's scheduled for April 19th.
Robyn, teach you.
Just a, and this does not have to be answered now, but in reference to a question that I would have, and actually Dave brought it up, was there was that time that's mentioned, why, you know, the new configuration would have two sidewalks. And so I think maybe even with that, like a thorough understanding, I mean, from what I see, there's a telephone pole in the old one, and, you know, which is cheaper, but more of a defined, why is that the process? And you don't have to give it now?
Right.
You can if you'd like to.
I did want to address it, because it's funny, I actually had that slide in the presentation and took it out. I shouldn't have done that. One of the policies that the committee developed was the sidewalk policy. And what it states is that every residential street should have at least one sidewalk, but every collector and arterial street should have two. And so for all of those streets that you're talking about, those are all collector streets. So it's not an issue of not fixing the ADA things, it's fixing the ADA things and having a second sidewalk. And the reason for that is because those are the busier streets with vehicular traffic. So you want to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that people aren't having to cross as much. So that's the reason why you'll see a recommendation to have a sidewalk on a street, they may already have one on the other side. It's to fit in with that sidewalk policy. And that actually weeded out a lot of locations. Remember how I said there were 354 locations without a sidewalk? Well, a lot of those were residential streets where there already is one sidewalk. So those streets get dropped because they already meet the sidewalk policy. Okay? So that's the reason that it gets pared down more. So that was one of the criteria that you're using to filter out. And so that's the reason, and it answers both of your questions.
Thank you. All right. So recommendation from staff is placing this on the agenda for next week for the kickoff of the 45-day comment period. So any objections by council members? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and place that on?
Mr. Mayor, I do want, though, I do want more of a sense about what projects would go in what priority. I think you've got a map. Again, I think some of these are very peculiar in that they don't address the real problems while they add sidewalks. And I have a lot of questions about how we ended up with the priority list that we did. It isn't the effort, but it strikes me that we end up with some very peculiar priorities that do massive investments where there isn't a lot of pedestrian traffic. And we seem to skirt commercial areas where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic. So I guess I've got a lot of questions about how we ended up with the priorities that we did. Not that we, the objectives aren't great in what we're trying to do, but the end result seems peculiar and illogical in a number of cases.
Johanna?
I don't know if staff has thought this, you know, has a number available, but the $16 million that is not covered is in 2012 dollars? Do we have any idea what this is going to look like 16 years out? Or, I mean, I realize that, you know, I realize that 16, or I realize that that's an artificial number. You could have it all tomorrow, or you could have it in five years, but has there been a thought about, it really isn't, we all know it really isn't $500,000 a year for the next X number of years. So do we have a, have you sort of factored that in?
I don't have the number, but I can. I mean, I can calculate for inflation and get a number.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I realize that that's, saying that, that's slightly artificial, because we don't know.
Right.
But it'd be useful.
And I think we've done that for planning purposes, just as, just getting a better sense of the CIP and how things are going to fit together. I think that request has come up before for other projects. So if we can try to get today's dollars and future dollars, just so we start thinking about that when we're looking at long-term projects, that would be helpful. All right. Thanks, everybody. So this will be on the agenda for next week. And thank you to staff or consultants and our citizens for all their work on this. The next item that we're going to talk about is the resolution to reduce the number of historic commission members.
Oh, yeah, that sort of sneaking way?
Let's just wait 30 seconds.
Thank you, Annie.
Hey, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'll see you out on the road, I'll see you out walking or biking.
You will.
Right.
Russ?
Thank you, Lynn.
Hello, Bob.
Do we have anything new under pressure?
I don't have a talk to fill.
Quiet?
Only five years later.
Literally?
Yeah. Yeah, we do. I'll give you a call, could tell you.
Is it bad news?
No, it's not bad news. It's, it ought to be, it should have been done, and I think we're right on the cusp of getting, having one for Christmas. Yeah.
Okay. Council, we have a resolution reducing the number of members for the historical commission from 10 to 5, and also a request that the city manager assign a staff liaison to the historical commission. We're joined by Ron Anzalone, chairman of the historical commission. I confess that when I was signing off on the package last week, I had not yet seen that there was a request for the staff. I've known that this was an issue in the past, but I amended the staff report at the last second to ask for time for us to talk, just so I understand what your requirements are and what your needs are, and then see if we can work it from there before making that commitment. But that was my request to the council, and that'll be the council's decision, though, in terms of how we work that.
Absolutely, that would be great. So from the sublime to the slightly more mundane, the historical commission, well, the city manager has introduced me as the chairman of the historical commission. I am not the chairman of the historical commission, I'm a member of the historical commission, but we haven't been able to meet. So I haven't officially been elected as chairman. I've been sort of functioning in that capacity. Over the last number of months, we have lost several people from the historical commission, either have moved out of the city, such as Rick Turman, or have died in office. And so we are down now to four members of the historical commission, and we've been unable to secure a quorum, based on the fact that the historical commission is officially 10 members, which seemed like a good idea a number of years ago, when there were commission members who were actively engaged in a number of projects in the wake of the bicentennial. So this goes back some years. And since then, because we don't also have any city staff assigned, we've been trying to do catch-as-catch-can with many projects. The members of the commission historically have also been members of other active groups within the city that are promoting history and culture, have been members of the Arts and Culture Task Force, have been members of one or more of the historical societies or related activities, like the Victorian Society, or Vipus, or the Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation. And so we have remained active in a lot of ways, but the historical commission itself has some very specific responsibilities under the comprehensive plan. And we have handled various referrals on development proposals, we have recommended signage for projects, such as the project that is going ahead on North Washington Street. We have recommended place names for subdivisions and for new development projects within the city, based on historical antecedents and historic property searches and that sort of thing. We've had a number of projects that have been kind of in limbo for a while. We thought, as did you all, that we were going to have a lot to do with the city center. And we had a number of... seems like a good number. HARB is currently at five as well. And as you know, it is not the easiest thing, given a community of our size and all of the things that citizens contribute to, to get people, you know, to serve for a period of time. So we'd like to redouble our efforts to kind of reinvigorate the historical commission and get some fresh blood, because some of the blood of, some of us is getting a little peaked, historic even. And we'd like some successor folks to start stepping up to the plate. So we think this might help that process along. And then, secondly, we have not ever had city staff assigned as liaison to the historical commission. We do have the city clerk, and Kathy and Veronica have been tremendous in helping out in setting, helping us set up our agendas and arranging for space, for meeting space in the city hall and things like that. But they're not in a position to assist us with any professional advice on historical matters, or to really refer some of the planning things and development proposals to us and maybe give us some suggestions on how to handle some of those things. So that's what we'd like to talk about with the city manager and your staff.
Any questions by council members? People come, people good with this going forward? Okay. So why don't we place it on the calendar? One outstanding item is for city staff to talk to the commission members about staff resources.
And we'll talk.
Joanna.
No, I just simply wanted to say that this is, there's a precedent for this. There are other committees that are also struggling with this and have come before council and decided to reduce their membership. And that makes a lot of sense. I mean, if you can't make quorum, you know, things are different in 2010 than they were in, you know.
1977.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
And, but I think, you know, I think the intent is to honor the idea of the commissions and bring in that expertise, but just simply being thoughtful about the fact that we really want to get business going.
Exactly.
And we can't do it.
Exactly. No, appreciate that very much. And the other thing to note is that we are sometimes confused with being the Falls Church Historical Society. And so we get all sorts of requests from folks around the country for genealogy, for, you know, information on local history. We usually refer that stuff to the Mary Riley Stiles Library, something like that. But it does take some time to kind of screen those things. So that's one of the things we'd be asking to talk about with city staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to the government challenge grant for our space.
And that's pretty much it. This would be on behalf of Creative Cauldron. Cindy Mester has done a great job in putting this together. We've done it twice before, and the request is to provide a match, $5,000. And we're proposing that that come out of council contingency. Now, there's a discussion for the future about creating a competitive process with a designated group amount of funds. We don't have that in place, but that could be a budget discussion in the coming weeks. But in the meantime, we would recommend we make the commitment out of council contingency.
Council members, any questions on this? Joanna?
Yeah, I just, I seem to recall this. I regret that I don't, it doesn't all immediately come to mind, but this is a, this is an extraordinary situation. This is a one-time out of council contingency. This is not considered a regular commitment.
That's exactly right. So this is with a one-time grant. We could apply in the future, but it's a one-time request.
I think I sort of sparked that conversation a little bit in a mayor's meeting. I think you all got notes about it. I'm supportive of this one-time effort. I'd like to see us have it as a separate line item budget issue. But this year, I think it means doing an amendment, trying to get it, and we're going to miss some matching. Doesn't make sense to do that over $5,000. But I think council, to the extent that we can, needs to really commit to the arts in the future, fund it, and have a process where various groups and organizations can apply.
Yes.
And I think that there's precedent for that with how we use other money. So I think we need to just get cracking on that as soon as we hit the budget. So other council members? So why don't we go ahead and place this on the calendar?
Okay.
For next week. Wyatt, would your recommendation be this was next week item as well?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay.
Grants due April 1st, so I need it by next week.
Yeah. So we would recommend that that be on the consent calendar.
Okay. Let's move through it, so let's put it on consent.
Okay.
How much do we have in that contingency?
7,500.
So basically it gets.
It's 2,500 left.
Takes us to 2,000 till the end of the year.
And Cindy, Wyatt, as you're talking to other groups, et cetera, I know that there's other money that's been used out of contingency. I think there is a sense of council that we're trying to move away from that and move it on to budget items and really leave contingency money to emergencies.
To be contingency.
Or things that are legislative, like scanning projects, things of that nature.
Okay.
Or filing projects that are real contingency, related to council activity. So if we can, if we can let that be known, I think that would be good. All right, we are on to the sewer rate ordinance.
Well, we have a quick resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot the stormwater.
Yes. And this resolution would authorize and direct me to proceed with the development of options for the creation of a stormwater utility enterprise fund and to identify ways to fund that. There's three big areas of policy work. We need to identify our costs, and we've done a lot of work on that. But to get the universe of costs that we need to meet through this fund, what's the preferred way to raise revenues to meet those costs? And there are models out there, and we will use those models and develop those options for the council, based on impervious coverage, or an ad valorem-based fee, or other methods. And then lastly, administration, what's the most efficient way to administer the revenue collection for the enterprise fund? And who would be assigned that responsibility? We have a timeline here that I've developed with Mr. Hicks, who's here to answer any questions. The goal would really be, though, to have the policy work done and publicly vetted over the summer, so that the council will be in position to make a decision in the fall, so that we can build our CIP with an understanding of what our revenue policy to meet those stormwater needs is going to be. And then from that, it would go through the budget process and then be implemented on July 1st, 2013. That's the basic timeline that we've laid out, and we'd be happy to get any feedback from council on that timeline and what we've laid out here.
Council, why don't we go though? I understand that there's a lot of questions, so let's just go down the line. Robin?
I'm okay right now.
Okay. Joanna?
Yeah, Wyatt, you may recall that I was wandering through City Hall this morning. Trying.
You joined her.
I did. I had a, it was lively, trying to find the right conference room where I was supposed to be. But the point being that when I finally found it, and it was, we were talking stormwater, there was, there was a lively debate. There was a lively debate. It was a group that gathered, it was city staff and residents, and, you know, one council person and folks from the ESE. And I just wanted to make sure that in all those discussions, I see that you have the ad valorem notion, but that the enterprise fund was only, was one mechanism. But another vehicle was, you know, utility tax, another, I mean, there was just, there seemed to be general agreement that this needed to be done. But what was interesting was everyone was talking, you know, different methodologies. So I think on the one hand, the good news is, everybody gets it. It's just sort of how we get there. And so I'm just hoping that you're, that you have a range of options that you're considering that just isn't simply, you know, dollars on the, you know, cents on the tax dollar. But it's, right? Wrong?
No, absolutely. As Wyatt began his conversation, there's three parts to what we're talking about. One is the expenditure side. What are we talking about? What are the costs? And you guys have had questions for that. We want to move forward and answer those questions. The second part is, if that's the expense side of the ledger, what's the revenue side? How do we pay for that? And that could be ad valorem, added on to your tax rate. It could be a fee that's based on impervious cover or some surrogate for that. But certainly, it's in that area that it's a policy discussion, and it needs to happen with you, and it needs to happen with the community. The last bit, and it shouldn't be trivialized, is how we're going to administer, how we're going to actually collect that.
No, and that was a lively discussion. Sorry, that was a lively discussion, again, about, you know, there's no point in, oh, sorry, there was not only just how you collect it, but it was how you evaluate the whole effort towards stormwater, you know, management, abatement, you know? If every household in this city put in a, you know, rain barrel, what would that number look like, and how would it affect our Chesapeake Bay, you know? 25 million, you know? And that, I mean, I thought it was a really useful debate, and certainly one that you've had.
Certainly, those are very valid questions. Those are questions that were asked at our recent town hall meeting, that if we go to a fee base, then do I get credit for some of those things? And I think we need to explore all of that. And that's part of the conversation that's commissioned by this resolution.
Dave?
Yeah, I'd like to see some maintenance of effort assumption built into here. In other words, we've traditionally paid out of regular taxes for some of this work. And I think we need to be very clear with the citizens that this is over and above what would otherwise be planned, possible within our overall budget balancing of the need to provide police and fire and schools and other things. So I don't see it in here, maybe I missed it, but I want it either in the whereass clause or now therefore be it resolved, that we're talking about a level of infrastructure investment that has not been foreseen in the past and was pointed out as a result of the recent storms. And then, secondly, I think Johanna really hit on something, which is, there may be a whole lot of little fairly cheap things that we can do that would chip away at this, that would make a massive investment of infrastructure, maybe not quite so massive. So there's a real public education, working with the public component here, that I want to see. What could we all collectively do for, you know, a relatively small amount of money that would prevent having to pay a great deal more in either taxes or whatever fees you put on? Because you can call it a fee, but it's still a tax. All right? It is. So what are those kinds of things we can do to lessen the need for this that are cost-effective, that we could work with homeowners so that they see the advantages of doing that? Thanks.
Okay. I had two quick things. One is after, I think, the first town hall that we had, there were several questions and follow-ups that we were going to get back to the community on. Some of those had to do with funding, others didn't. I think I tried to lay those out in summary comments at the end of the town hall, and it was reported on. If staff can pull that and make sure that those items, as they relate to funding, are incorporated in this, some were, some weren't. So if we can just call that and get that incorporated in. Two, I share Dave's concerns that, at the end of the day, we need to be able to distinguish about what is our current level of effort, and if we're going to have to meet unfunded mandates, that we'd be able to distinguish those in some framework, because some of the mandates that we're getting are pretty significant. Where an enterprise fund may make very good sense, it may be a different issue if it's current efforts that we should be making. We just need to be able to delineate that, explain it, even if we are going to move into an all-encompassing enterprise fund. So that maintenance of effort point, I think, is really, really important. And those were the issues that I wanted to touch upon. And thank you for bringing this forward, Wyatt. I know that I had made the request based on conversations I'd had with individual council members. So, and the timeframe, given everything else that's going on, that makes sense to me. I'd just like it done sooner than later, but that goes with everything, so. All right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this will be on the calendar for Monday as well.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to the sewer rate ordinance.
Well, council, it's good to see our old friends, Tracy Mauer and Ed Donahue from Municipal and Financial Services Group, and Brenda Creel, our Director of Utilities, and Rodney Collins, our Chief Engineer, are here to answer questions about this as well. But we're going to turn it over to Tracy right away, just to go into the report. And we've got handouts. Council, you got handouts over the weekend?
There might have been a slight change. Here? But the, you think? A slight change? Just in case. I printed them, so the paper's going to get thrown out anyway. Recycled, recycled. Right. That's what I mean. I mean, recycled. That's what you meant to say.
And council, while we're getting set up, in the spirit of recycling and keeping what we need, if everybody can keep the pet plan cheats, Wendy asked me to remind council members to just bring them in for next week.
Right.
Rather than tossing them.
Yes.
We're not, staff is not going to be.
We're not tossing.
Reproducing these.
No, we're not.
After we have completed the sewer rate study update, and we only have five slides for it, it's going to be an efficient presentation. Brenda is available to provide an update to the council on the discussions on private laterals and INI into our sewer system. And we've got some updates to report out and a brief discussion on that as well. Tracy?
Is this supposed to be like this? Hello. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us back again. Before I get into the update, I would just like to quickly summarize the initial study, just to jog everyone's memory about what has already been done. About a year ago, we finished the initial sewer rate study. And the point of that study was to compute the amount of revenues required to be collected from your current customers and compare those to your current rate structure in fiscal year 11. When we did that, we found there was a significant shortfall, and we proposed a multi-year financial plan. Within that financial plan, we had adjusted the amount of revenues you should be collecting from your customers. We also recommended an adjustment in your current rate structure, which increased the usage charges, and also introduced a fixed charge per bill. And the city did pass the first year of the multi-year financial plan last year for fiscal year 12. And then the city again engaged just to update the sewer financial model, and I'll be showing you the results in the following presentation. What's, oh, okay. So since we completed the initial study in February 2011, we have received a lot of updated information we have put into the financial model. We've received fiscal year 11 actual budget numbers, as well as, I'm sorry, actual operating expenses, as well as fiscal year 12 budget numbers. We've received an updated capital improvement plan, as well as additional existing debt payments, which include two additional debt issuances, the VRA 2011 bond payments, and payments associated with the ASA upgrade for nutrient removal. We've updated your miscellaneous revenues. We've also analyzed actual customer usage information for fiscal year 10 and fiscal year 11. And again, as I just recently stated, you also implemented the first year of the recommended financial plan in fiscal year 12, which has that fixed charge per bill of $5, as well as. And then the city, again, engaged just to update the sewer financial model, and I'll be showing you the results in the following presentation. What's, oh, okay. So since we completed the initial study in February 2011, we have received a lot of updated information we have put into the financial model. We've received fiscal year 11 actual budget numbers, as well as, I'm sorry, actual operating expenses, as well as fiscal year 12 budget numbers. We've received an updated capital improvement plan, as well as additional existing debt payments, which include two additional debt issuances, the VRA 2011 bond payments, and payments associated with the ASA upgrade for nutrient removal. We've updated your miscellaneous revenues. We've also analyzed actual customer usage information for fiscal year 10 and fiscal year 11. And again, as I just recently stated, you also implemented the first year of the recommended financial plan in fiscal year 12, which has that fixed charge per bill of $5, as well as the unit rate per thousand gallons being $7.25. When I take all those updated numbers and put them into the financial model, you can see numerically what comes out in fiscal year 12 with those operating expenses, and then looking at your capital costs, you come up with a total revenue requirement of $3.22 million in fiscal year 12. When we less out all of your miscellaneous revenues, you get a net revenue requirement, or what's required to be collected from your current customer base, of $3.11 million. That is growing to $3.97 million through fiscal year 15. And the important point to notice on this slide is revenues under the current adopted structure from fiscal year 12 moving forward, and revenues continuing with the original financial plan going forward. If you stick with your current rate structure, there will be a deficit moving forward that's growing every year. However, if you continue to follow the financial plan that was recommended, revenues will meet expenses, and the sewer fund will be a sufficient fund going forward in the future. So continuing along with your financial plan, what are your rates going to look like in fiscal year 13? It's approximately a 9% increase in the unit rate per thousand gallons. It goes from 7.25 to 7.91 per thousand gallons. It also, the fixed charge per bill remains constant at $5 per bill. Single-family and townhouse residential customers will continue to be based on their winter usage. And we wanted to show you where your customers lie. We have some sample bills shown here, and there are different levels of where the customers use. The percentage of customers that fall in between each of those blocks is shown in the second column. I've highlighted the fifth row down, because your average customer uses approximately 15,000 gallons per quarter. 28% of your customers lie in that block, from 12,000 to 15,000 gallons per quarter. And their bill would increase from 1,1375 in fiscal year 12 to 1,2365, which is $9.90 increase per quarter. And less than 1% of your customers use over 50,000 gallons per quarter. And if you have any questions as I'm going along, feel free to interrupt.
Can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
Is that, is that a traditional blend of customer percentages? I mean, so you would not expect that 28 to be like 40?
No, I would not.
Okay, this is standard.
This is typical for Northern Virginia.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So finally, based on what we've seen, our findings and recommendations are that annually you look at the financial model and update it when you get actuals and new budgets coming along. We do recommend that you monitor your customer usage annually. A reason for this is, over 97% of your revenues come from usage rates. So a major swing in water usage, because your sewer is based on metered water, will create a major impact, will impact your sewer revenues in a large portion. And also, we recommend that you continue with the financial plan. It seems to be working along with the actuals and updated budgets going forward. And we recommend that in fiscal year 13, you do move from 7.25 to 7.91 per thousand gallons, keeping that $5 per bill constant. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, council?
Could you whip back about three, yeah, why the, I mean, the jumps look dramatic, but I'm not certain if it is because we're making up for lost time, or there are external realities that the city has just not been alive to.
You are making up for lost time.
Okay.
You hadn't adjusted sewer rates for a fair amount of time prior to last year. And rather than having a really large increase all at once, the council and staff, and we agreed, spread it over several years.
And I think you may have touched on this already. Based on what we did last year, we're still in line with the amount.
Correct.
So we're hitting our targets, essentially.
Yes. The thing we're concerned about, and it's not you specifically, it's generally, what we're seeing, and colleagues, peers in other firms in other parts of the country, water use seems to be going down 1% to 1.5% per household per year, pretty much consistently across the country. Some places, it's worse than that, but that seems to be the average, and if that keeps...
Yes, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. Yeah. So, no.
Yeah, I understand, but it has ramifications. That's cumulative. Well, but conservation doesn't reduce costs for people.
That's true.
Most of your costs are fixed, and so anybody who tells people they're going to save money by conserving water is really misleading them.
They're helping save the planet.
Right, it's the bigger...
Right.
And we get a big gold star.
Right, absolutely.
Anything else, council? All right, and I think staff is recommending that this be based on the calendar for first reading on Monday, so if there's no objections, why don't we go ahead and do that?
I'm going to go home and just flush all the toilets a whole bunch.
All right, thank you. We are on to council comments and schedule.
Could we just, if the council would like to have a brief update on our work on the private laterals, and just a report on our smoke testing?
Oh, yes.
Thanks.
And the segue is, yes, with conservation measures, the unmetered, or the metered water is declining by 1.5% across the country nationwide, but as our infrastructure gets older, the unmetered portion, i.e. the INI, is increasing across the country, and we are experiencing that as well.
I'm sorry, what does INI stand for?
Inflow and infiltration. I should have let Joanna say it.
I read it out here.
What meeting were you at?
I'm telling you, it was a whispering.
Infiltration is groundwater coming in, enclosed when you have stormwater coming in.
That's right. And that's what we want to talk with you about, and Brenda?
Thank you. If you recall, in 2004, we launched a comprehensive sewer rehabilitation and improvement program. That program is primarily constituted of a program of smoke testing to identify INI, as well as closed-circuit TV inspections. And from that information, we've developed a, annually developed a plan to repair and renovate our system, primarily through lining of our pipes. We've just completed our latest phase of evaluation, and with that, about 80% of our system has now been evaluated. And we have rehabilitated about 25% of the system. With that latest study came information both on INI in the public system and in private, on private property. So we have made the results of those study available to the 47 property owners that emerged from the study, and shared with them that information, and have asked them to voluntarily make these repairs. And thus far, out of the 47 letters, I think we've had 10 inquiries from homeowners or property owners. So we're working with them, providing additional information as they've requested that, and we will evaluate this pilot program of voluntary measures. In addition to that, we're instituting a flow monitoring program. We'll take probably three to four months of data, primarily in the Hillwood and Brook Drive area, which has been an area of concern in the past. And that will help us better quantify what the problem is in terms of INI in the system. So wanted to update the council on where we were on this part of our program.
Council, any questions? Joanna?
In the, you know, spirit of total disclosure, Brenda and I have had some emails back and forth, along with Wyatt, and I would only say that I think that the city has done, you know, a fine job in terms of its, you know, its engagement. But I did take issue, and I raised this with Brenda and Wyatt, about the letter that went out to the 47 households. And I thought that the language, in my view, the language was not as helpful as it could be, because as Brenda has described it, this is, well, it's interesting, because Brenda has described the language, and as did Wyatt, so there's consistency on the staff level, as being voluntary. I read the letter and said, there's nothing voluntary about this. This letter says, you have this problem, here is the picture, here is the cure, repair, replace, and you need a plumbing, you need a plumber, you need a plumbing, you need a plumber, plumbing permit. So that, I would not, as average Joe household, would not have said, oh, gosh, here is a voluntary suggestion from the city. I would have seen it as a directive from the city saying, you need to go do this, get her done, and then the last paragraph, the last sentence of the letter says, and please notify our office when it's done. So I don't see anything voluntary about it. I'm not suggesting that that was not, that directing citizens to do this is not absolutely within the scope of what the city is supposed to do. That's fine. But to call it voluntary, as an average reader, I would not have considered this voluntary whatsoever. I would have considered the city as telling me to get this done and report back to the city. Now, when I talked to a couple of citizens, you know, blessedly, thankfully, my house apparently was not targeted, you know, this can be $5,000 in a backhoe. So this can be serious stuff. And I think we recall, we had a woman come and make a rather dramatic presentation with her pipe.
Yes.
Yeah, and that was $12,000. So I'm just suggesting that the language could have been possibly more precise, the city could have communicated, I think, in a way that helped people understand the complexity of this, and stood ready to be of more assistance. I'm not suggesting that the city paid for this, I'm just suggesting that all of a sudden, this is a boom. You know, this is a big message for people, it could have significant cost implications. And if I were average Joe person who got this, I would say, golly, I'm not being, I'm not being gently guided, I am being told to comply, and I don't know what to do. So that was my issue, which I shared with staff, and obviously, everybody, you know, is, has meant to move forward in an appropriate way to cure, but I think the communication could have been a little more helpful.
I mean, thanks for sharing that. I mean, if that, I mean, what I'll say is, council hasn't adopted a policy. We had discussions about whether that even makes sense, to do disconnections, and the notion was, that's something that was a large topic, that needed to be thought through because of the cost implications. So, you know, if there's letters going out that seem short of voluntary, I think there's an issue. So if we need to clarify that, and I'm not sure how much of a, how big of a problem it is, because I haven't been getting those calls, but if that's not clear, I think the city needs to be prepared to clarify that, as far as voluntary versus non-voluntary. Thanks for bringing that toward me, Joanna.
We've gotten 10 calls back, and I think every one of those conversations has gone very well, just in terms of, you know, citizens saying, can you clarify? And we'll continue to monitor. I think we took council member Barry's criticisms constructively, and this is new, we've never actually sent letters out to homeowners on this topic before, and we do want to be consistent in our message going forward, and we want to try to make some progress on it going forward also. But we do need to be clear in our correspondence.
Absolutely, and that's helpful. The other just point of information is that, on the other side, we have received calls regularly from homeowners that are impacted, that were impacted by the backup, who expect us to act upon this information that we received through this assessment. And so I've, I get regular, you know, inquiries about that, but absolutely appreciate the feedback, and will, you know, continue to, this is, this pilot is going to be one that's going to require a lot of dialogue. One letter will not be sufficient to work through the issue, so we're mindful of that.
Thank you.
Robin, do you?
No.
I've always tried to live by the rule that I never ask of anybody else what I wouldn't be willing to do myself, and I don't really know whether we got a letter. My wife maybe is dealing with it. Hopefully, if we did get a letter, she is, I didn't see it, but that's irrelevant to me. I think it's very unsatisfactory to drop this sort of a letter on a citizen without offering some options, perhaps the possibility that the city might organize people together, and that they could do some sort of a group purchase thing with a contractor, for example, and get some benefits from, you know, economies of scale that you couldn't otherwise if you were just one off. So I do think this has to be handled very, very carefully, and I don't think anyone here would like to get a letter like this. And if we did, I think the reaction would be pretty strong, so, anyway. I do think we need to keep working on this, and look for creative ways to ease the burden to the extent that we can.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. What we think we're going to do now is... Is take a break, and take the microphones down, and get set up for the closed session discussion.
Before we do that, I just want to see if there's any council comments on the schedule. I do have one thing that I think we should clarify. Right now, we've got an April 5 work session that's marked budget. I think we should consider having that, so we can be productive again, looking at big-picture issues, doing, labeling that as preliminary budget markup, so we would have essentially two preliminary marks.
So the two are what, April 5 and April?
April 5 and April 12.
Ah, yeah.
And the reason why I'm saying that the 5th be a preliminary mark also, is because we wouldn't have had the formal school present, or not the formal, but we wouldn't have had a joint work session at that point. And the reason why we're doing April 12 with schools rather than the 5th has to do with, I believe, spring break.
Spring break, yes.
So we didn't want to put that at a time where folks are going to be away. And again, the preliminary mark is just to talk about big-picture issues, with the understanding that we wouldn't have had the school piece yet. So it'd be a preliminary, preliminary, preliminary mark, if you will. And certainly, if we don't need it, we can always take it off the calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
Robbie?
Anything else by other council members?
Oh, yes, it's mine.
Very quickly, a legislative issue came up today. The Coalition for Smarter Growth has criticized a, sort of the final version of a transportation bill. Their basic argument is that it takes planning power away from local governments, and gives VDOT more control over what local governments do, and there are various penalties if local governments don't follow what VDOT wants them to do. I've asked staff to take a look at that, if in fact that's the case. Does anybody have any problem if we contact our state legislators and ask them to oppose this thing?
I'm curious, is, if it's VDOT, are they specifically talking VDOT roads?
Yeah, they are, which in our case would be 7 and 29. So if this, again, I'm going on the basis of one side, and I've asked staff to analyze it, but if it means that if an adjoining county, for example, decided it would be better served with a few more lanes on Route 7, are we somehow in danger of losing some maintenance money if we don't go along with that? So I just want to get to the bottom of this, but if it has that impact, I would recommend we vigorously oppose it. But again, I think we need to analyze whether we're dealing with advocacy here or facts. Cindy, do you have any initial?
I concur that we need to look into it and verify. They've tied, the bill ties the six-year improvement money, some of which, that's a lot of what you just saw, the PED Plan money, that's the $4 million. So we want to be cautious. 7 and 29 are national highways, so there are roads, but VDOT has control, and what they're trying to do is tie our planning to the state's planning, which is not acceptable at a locality's issue. So we've been looking at the bill anyway, and then Mr. Schneider forwarded the smart bro... Growth Coalition's points.
We are on to the closed session, so we'll go ahead and make the motion, and then let things, we'll have the microphones removed. Upon a motion made by council member...
Barry.
And seconded by council member...
Gardner.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do they add it up at the end of the session and say...
And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of such legal advice by council, that being the water litigation. Mayor Brew? Yes, sorry, these are the old forms, and I'm updating them. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, wow, they really are the old forms, aren't they?
Sorry.
Yeah. Let's get...
Yeah, I'll keep going.
Let's get Mr. Meyer and Mr. Z here.
Yeah, let's, sorry about those guys.
So, there's probably Pepe in there somewhere.
All right, hopefully I'll hit everybody. Mr. Pepe's absent.
Yep. Mr. Kalen's absent.
Mr. Kalen is absent.
Mr. Snyder.
Snyder is, yes, already. Gardner?
Yes.
Barry?
Yep.
Webb?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's everybody, right?
Yep, he got him.
Great, thanks, everybody. All right, we are going into closed session at 5:00 after.
Nice editing on the fly, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hold on.
And for the record, we almost kept the...